2020 at 6:00 PM and let's rise for the invocation and pleasurable allegiance.
Dear Father, we come before you this evening, my Father, asking my Father that you, uh, that you healed our country, my Father. All this unrest that is taking place, we ask your protection for our law enforcement, my Father. Those that are wanting to protest peacefully, that is their right, but those that are there to cause trouble, my Father. I pray, my Father, that you bring a healing to our country, Lord, and that we unite as one, knowing that every life matters, my Father. We ask, my Father, your guidance for our federal government, our state and our local government, Lord. We ask that you protect us and that you guide us and we as a council here in Aransas Pass, that we do what is the best for our residents here in our, in our small community. We ask your blessings in Jesus' name, amen.
With your allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, per Aransas Pass ordinance extending a local state of disaster declaration and in compliance with the Governor Abbott direct to reduce the change of COVID-19 transmission. Citizens are not allowed to congregate in the council chamber during council meetings. Council meetings are livestreamed at http://forwardslashyoutube.com/uses/forwardslashcityofaransaspass. Public comments shall be made by either one, posting comments on the YouTube livestream site during the meeting and comment will be read aloud. Number two, submitting an email to the city secretary at aptx.gov and state the respective agenda item or items, or a comment under the citizen comment section at least 30 minutes before the start of each meeting of the city council. Or number three, submitting a written statement and placing it in a drop box located outside city council. 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, Aransas Pass, Texas, at least 30 minutes before the start of the city council meeting and mark city council meeting comment. Comments will be provided to the council prior to voting on the measure for that particular meeting and shall be entered into the record of each meeting. This written comment shall serve as the required public testimony pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.07, 007, and shall constitute a public hearing for purpose of any public hearing requirements under the law. And now we're gonna go to presentation and proclamations. And right now, we're gonna go to a proclamation recognizing Cindy Simmons as GFWC Texas Federation of Women's Club State President.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the GFWC Texas Federation Women's Club has been instrumental in improving the lives of the people of Texas throughout multiple and numerous endeavors in the fields of education, safety, conservation, health and arts, and whereas in conjunction with representation for the GFWC Texas Federation and Women's Club, Aransas Pass, we specifically recognize the community spirit, commitment, involvement and leadership of longtime resident, Aransas Pass High School alumni and friend. Cindy Simmons, as she represents the GFWC Texas Federation Women's Club in her area, and whereas Cindy first became a member of Ingleside Women's Club in 1994, enrolled through the local ranks, president 2002 to 2004, selected as GFWC Texas needs representative 2004. Served as empowering women's chair 2006 to 2008, served as official photographer as GFWC Texas South Central Region 2007 Conference, and during TFWC 2008, 2010 administration, served as fundraising committee of South Central Region 2010, 2011. Served as protocol chairman 2012, 2014, served a member, uh, a member on South Central Region Audit Committee 2016, 2018. Served as state chairman for domestic violence and became part of candidates for GFWC Texas State Abolvers 2018 to 2020. And whereas Cindy Simmons, as a LEED graduate representative, conducted several workshops on both district and state level and was instrumental in proposing and getting the Federation to adopt a LEED pin to be presented to every LEED representative at the induction ceremony at GFWC International Convention, and whereas Cindy Simmons has always served her community by working with the youth and helped organize and start the Fireside Junior Reds Club in Ingleside, acting as one of their first sponsors. The club was organized to both and encourage self-esteem, citizenship and pride in young women of the club. Her purpose and mission is the educational, emotional and community support of the young people of the community. She was instrumental in the organization of the DB Harbor City Junior Reds, an organization whose objective is bring together young people to develop and encourage the interest and talent of individual members to work as a unified group to do charitable work. Cindy also was a sponsor of Catholic Youth Group in Ingleside, has served to the Ingleside Library Board and directors and is member of the Catholic Daughter in America of Portland, Texas. And now therefore, on behalf of myself and a member of the Aransas Pass City Council, I present President Diana Brown of the Aransas Pass Women's Club and Cindy Wilson, President of the Ingleside Women's Club, recognized for her tremendous, Cindy Simmons. For her tremendous dedication and numerous contributions to the citizens of San Francisco County, Aransas Pass and Ingleside. Congratulate her and her accomplishment in the GFWC Texas Federation of Women's Club and Ingleside Women's Club over the past 24 years of local, district and state level. We wish her continued success in her new role as GFWC Texas Federation Women's Club State President, beginning July 1st, 2020. And every July 1st will be Cindy Simmons Day.
Man, there goes 40 years of good service, but the picture was rambling there.
Yes, yes.
Except, except Gary, I mean, I mean Billy, because he's not a member of the Women's Club, but we all are, so you just. I'm only kidding, Billy, get over here.
Oh, why don't we all get out of there?
Get over here.
Everybody in this room is a member of Women's Club except Billy.
Come on, Billy. Gary, come on.
Well, we elect you to come on up or?
I want us to come down.
No.
It's something when we're whole lunch class here.
Appreciate all your.
That's right.
I'll keep you in line.
Good luck. Good luck.
Okay, ready?
What a good-looking group.
Have you got the whole makeup?
Let me take a few though. Okay, that's one, hold on.
She does that often. This might be a real mega shot with the police chief taking it.
It's gonna be on our police floor this next month. Okay, I got three each.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Good job, yes.
How are you?
Good job.
Just got tired listening to what she did?
Dude, you can't pick anymore.
And then she just left. She left. She was awfully quiet. Is she okay?
Yes, we're all, we're all, we're all.
Yeah, I can, I can imagine.
Right now, right now, I wanna call in Irene, Irene, so she can say a couple of words about Judy Simmons.
Cindy.
Cindy.
As I said before, um, I'm Irene Irene with the Women's Club of Aransas Pass. Um, I have been for 25 years. Cindy's been a member of the Ingleside Women's Club for 26. This club has been in Aransas Pass since 1909, in Aransas, not the state, Aransas Pass. That says a lot for a civic-minded volunteer group of women. We're 54 members strong now. We back Cindy Simmons as the president of the state, not only because she's, um, worked for 10 to 14 years to get in that position, but she's from Ingleside and we're proud of her. The only other person from this 10-mile radius that's been a president of the state was Dorothy Roberts. And, um, she's got some big shoes to follow.
Yes, I do.
But, um, we're proud of her and thank y'all for what you did on this proclamation. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
We'll vacate.
You know, I moved here in Aransas Pass when I was 12 and y'all probably, my dad, my stepdad was Marvin Burnham. He had the House of Business machine. My mom was Kitty, who worked at the back. So, y'all.
I've been around here a while. Yes, I knew you were, I knew.
Now, now it's all hidden there. Yes. Boy, now, okay, small.
See now, now he, yeah, I knew he started, he's looking at me like.
Thank y'all.
Thank you ladies, congratulations Cindy.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye Teddy.
Thank you, Cindy, or Cindy for recognizing Cindy for this outstanding achievement.
There you go.
You're welcome.
Cindy Garner.
That's why she looks so vocal.
Nope.
Yeah, so she was probably a little bit older. Well, she's, uh, her. Yeah.
Maybe her mom.
She was probably about 71, 70, 77, somewhere around there. About five years.
She had a sister, was two years older than me, so I was supposed to.
She was class of anyone.
She was five years after me.
Two minutes, 30 seconds.
So I was 83.
Here they are, come on in.
Hey, hey, here comes trouble.
Okay, now we're gonna have an update by Larry Lemire, project manager for Land.
Okay, now we're gonna have an update by Larry Lemire, project manager for Landmark Structures regarding the water tower.
Yes, sir. So we got started about a week later than we thought last time. Had a little bit of rain, but we got the site graded out. We have the base down for the paving, and we poured the concrete approach. So we're moving forward, hopefully pouring asphalt, laying asphalt this week. If it stops raining and everything dries out, be Thursday, Friday, probably before everything gets dry enough. Possibly the end of this week, but I haven't looked at the forecast, so you tell me next week.
Next week.
Yeah, it's gonna rain.
And then we're still following up the electrical and the fence right after that. So a week later than what I had scheduled last month. So hopefully keep them there and get done with it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Now it's Eric's turn.
Mayor, Council, Eric Fiallo with LNV. As Larry mentioned, you know, they got a, started a week later, you know, continue to communicate with landmark and with city staff and any concerns that come up. We're working through them, and so I think we're good right now to, you know, for the schedule and for, you know, the paving and the fence location and all that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, guys.
Sure you can.
I got, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
It's even though it doesn't matter to this, is it okay if I could ask questions? Okay, on that grant that we had, on the jobs that y'all are gonna do all the job description for, for everything that we have, no change orders, please.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just saying.
I mean, we, that's our, that's our goal, right? I mean, and in situations where, no doubt, in situations where, you know, it's unavoidable, we try not to, certainly.
Just keep it minimal. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We would love a second water tower if you're willing to donate it.
What keeps you in mind?
Thanks, guys.
All right. Okay, now we're gonna go to board and commissioners appointment, and it's for the charter review commission.
I'm asking the city secretary, Mary, to come forward and give you a report on that.
Okay. The purpose for this item is simply to advise you that we're gonna bring appointments to this commission July the 6th. In the last charter review committee, it was comprised of 11 members, and each council member appointed two members, and the mayor appointed one regular member and three alternates. I'm sorry, and two alternates, to total two 11 members. And if there's any charter amendments, we're gonna have a quick turnaround because we'd have to call the election to add any charter amendments by August the 17th. So if there's any, I mean, we ask you that you submit your names at least by June the 26th so that we can get them to fill out a board application form so that we can bring them to you on July the 6th.
Just fill out the board application forms and turn them into you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Good, now we're gonna go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, but a city council will enact in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless a council member's request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting on 5/18/2020.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're gonna go to the city manager to consider enacting approval and automatic increase of garbage service, so as stated in the contract with absolute waste.
This is an item that we bring to you normally every year, and this year, the increase is one cent, as is stated in the memo, I believe. So what we're talking about is 12 cents a year for each bill, and that's what the calculation came out to in working with AWS. And normally, this is something that we ask that you pass on to the consumer. Again, we're talking, we would receive about $30 a year, and for the individual, about 12 cents a year.
Favor of the council.
I make a motion that we approve the automatic increase in garbage services as stated in the contract with absolute waste for an increase of one cent per month for all residential customers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to consider enacting on the insurance of a request for proposal for administrative services and requests for qualifications for engineering services related to the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation CD, BG, MRT Grant Program administered by the Texas General Land Office.
Yes. What we're doing with this, Mr. Mayor and Council, is we think it's best that we simply do this on our own and move forward ourselves. There, a nearby county, we have initially had talks with on this, but we think it's better to go out for RFQ, RFP, to see what grant administrative services are there that we can move quickly on. There are several dollars that we can obtain through this. Bottom line, we feel it's best that we do this ourselves for several reasons. But that's the request for you, is allow us to go out to RFQ, for RFP, RFQ, for a grant administrator for this very sizable grant.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the request for proposals and request for qualifications for engineering services related to the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Grant Programs administered by the Texas General Land Office.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to community enrichment. Consider enacting a request from Aransas Pass for youth for the use of the pool during the summer season at a discounted rate if and when the pool, when the pool opens for 2020 season.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are y'all doing this evening? I'm coming before you this evening to ask that we allow Aransas Pass for youth the discounted rate. That's something you all have done in the past. At the time, we're not open at the pool, but when we do open, we'd like to go ahead and have that approved by you all so we can work with them to host their kids. They've had, they're having a lower attendance this year as, just because of the governor's orders, and we will have a lower admission and capacity as well. But we're just trying to work out the logistics of that with them. But we would like for you all to give us permission to extend the discounted rate to them.
And I think last year, they used it on a Tuesday?
A Tuesday. We're talking, we're talking right now about Thursday because when we, we're looking at kind of modified hours at the beginning. So we're kind of talking about Thursday right now. But we just haven't hammered all that out yet.
Okay.
And it was $2 last year for a swimmer as well.
I remember that.
It's kind of the same thing, we just haven't worked out all the details, unfortunately.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for AP for youth to allow them to use the pool for a discounted rate of $2 per swimmer. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to consider enacting approving change order one with Katel Electric for the Aransas Pacific Center HVAC project in the amount of $1,120. Good or awful?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nothing.
I'm gonna let Gary start.
Briefly, it makes more sense, we believe, and we've analyzed this, it makes more sense to go the change order route for time-wise, and this is a price that wouldn't be much different if we, if we did it internally also. So, but primarily, time-wise is very important for us. So we are suggesting, if council approves, that we go with this particular change order instead of doing it in-house. Would you word that differently? Would you say that?
No, no, actually, Rebuild Texas, it was a grant that they, they wrote for us to do this project, and they have more of a timeline, and we'd like to, because they were so generous, we'd like to kind of fall under their timeline. They've requested completion, so we want to go ahead and move forward with that. They are gonna be switching out the breaker when it's live, where we would have to, if we did it in-house with our electrician, we would have to power everything down. So, and the cost difference wasn't that much. Does that sound right? That's what I was told. And they said they could start tomorrow.
How long is it gonna take?
They said they could do it tomorrow.
30 minutes.
Well, yeah, because it's only, it's a breaker.
Yeah.
A 200 amp breaker.
Yeah, it's a 200 amp breaker, and apparently, it doesn't turn off all the electricity when you turn it off.
Right, I understand that.
So they want to replace it. Yeah, it's $480 to take a breaker off and put three wires back on it. But it's okay, it is what it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Favor of the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve change order number one for the HVAC for $1,120. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to public safety, and it's consider enacting accepting a donation in the amount of $8,370 from Cheniere for the purchase and installation of an air purification system for City Hall, Police Department, and the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Cheniere had reached out to us during the pandemic crisis when we were just starting off on it, and they said, what can we do to help you guys out? I couldn't think of anything, so I asked my command team, and Lynn said, Lynn had just requested some quotes for an air purification system to put into the building to add onto the lights that we're also using for some of our staff that could not self-quarantine and go away, they have to work in the office, like dispatch and stuff. So Cheniere says, hey, we'll, we'll cover that whole cost for you. This is the cost that you're seeing here to get that installed. That will be installed by our local air conditioning guy that we use, Joe Dominguez. He's a resident in town, and he actually won the bid to maintain our maintenance a while back, so he will be adding this system in with y'all's approval on accepting this grant from Cheniere.
I make a motion that we accept a donation in the amount of $8,370 from Cheniere for the purchase and installation of an air purification system for City Hall, Police Department, and Fire Department. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to consider enacting on acceptance of a grant from Texas A&amp;M Forestry Service for a steward and Stevenson M1078 truck and site unit.
So, good evening, everyone. This is, this is actually a grant that we've been working on for the last three years with the forestry service for a brush truck. It's another military truck, but it is a newer model than what we currently have. The good thing about this truck is that they give you the truck for free, and then they throw in $20,000 on top of that to buy all the parts that you need to build it to turn it into a brush truck. That's something that we haven't had in the past. We've been just taking parts off old brush trucks and just piecing them together, piecing them together. The only difference between, well, this truck, of course, being newer, it's a deuce and a half where the truck we have is a five-ton, so it's a little shorter, let it get us in more, more places and stuff like that. It'd be a good asset for us.
What are you gonna do with the old brush truck?
Keep it.
Oh, you are gonna keep it.
My, my plan is to have the smaller brush truck for in-town stuff and use the larger brush truck, brush 35, to go out into the county and do that, the heavy brush, brush work. Or we can use both of them out there, both of them in town. One goes down. We actually had that instance where we lost a brush truck for a little while when the, when the, the black one blew the motor. We didn't have a brush truck, we actually had a borrowed truck from Ingleside.
I make a motion, we accept a grant from Texas A&amp;M Forestry Service for a steward and Stevenson M1078 truck and site unit. Seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to city council and staff announcements.
There are actually two items I want to make the, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm.
No, me and Billy are not gonna pick up the trash in the wrong places. Right, Billy?
No, no.
Actually, two items I want to bring to your attention. One is the Citywide Cleanup, and that's this Saturday, June 6th, and starts at like 8:00 in the morning. Somewhere in there. And if you can be there, you'll be more than welcome. So, and it'd be starting here at City Hall.
Meet out in the parking lot like last time?
Yes, that's right. So anyway, want to make you aware of that. Also, we got a lot of rain. And.
Great observation.
Somewhere in the Amazon, we got a lot of rain. Or maybe here, too. And I wanted to ask Fernando to come here and to report to you as far as the status of the pumps, and how everything is doing, and how we're keeping up, et cetera, and future plans for the pumps. There's a meeting tomorrow on this issue, actually. So Fernando, if you can come forward and just report on what's been happening last night and today as far as the rain and the pumps.
And tomorrow?
And tomorrow and Wednesday.
And the weekend?
Yes, so good evening, council. Just want to give you a quick update on what's been going on with our pumps. We, if y'all haven't noticed, one of our pumps, Euclid, you see smoke coming out of it. We've been having issues with it, it is burning oil, so we're constantly having to be keeping maintenance on it. We did bring in two additional pumps that rentals just to keep up this morning because we had three and a half inches by noon, and our pumps weren't keeping up. So we did bring extra pumps. The guys are gonna be working 24-hour shifts. Every three to four hours, they'll be switching out throughout the night, so we continue running them until all the ditches are pump dry. We are expecting more rain through Wednesday, so hopefully it won't be as much as we got today. But our staff will be on top of it. Our mechanic will be regularly going out and fueling them. And like I said, we'll have one person throughout the night working shift to keep an eye on the pumps.
Is it keeping up pretty well as far as?
The one we had the more struggles with was Euclid because of that one diesel pump. So we brought in an extra pump from, that we rented, and as of 5:00 today, the ditch was already going down, the roads were already clear. Good night, the ditch there at that position, you can see the, almost the bottom of the pipe, so those were dry. And then right before 5:00, they were setting up the secondary rental pump on Wheeler between Railroad and the levee, and they were setting that one there because that area was heavily inundated. It wasn't affecting any homes at this time, but we want to make sure we get the water out. So we got about eight pumps going right now, and I guess we'll maintain them through the night and until this rain is completely gone.
Thank you to you and your team for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
You will be following up with mosquito spray, right?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I want to point out to you, if you're not aware of it, we now have for these meetings two cameras. And there's a camera right there that now, when Fernando was speaking as an example, we had a camera right on him. Whoever is up there, there's now a slave, what they call a slave camera for that particular person who is speaking, in addition to the camera in the back. So we now have a two-camera operation, thanks to the work of the IT department. They did a wonderful job with Jeff and Seth. And we now have a meeting that's even better to watch because of the optics that go with it and that additional camera that's right under, in front of where the mayor is.
Okay.
So it's kind of hidden, looks like a weapon, but it's not, it's a camera. So anyway, just want to make that, make the council and mayor aware of that.
Thank you. Good, okay.
Okay, now, we're gonna go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matters that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Subsequent.
Thank you.
Just a cap real quick on what Fernando was saying with the rain. According to our rain gauge on top of PD, we got just under three inches within the first two hours of the rain.
Wow.
So that was a lot of rain inundating our infrastructure. Randall Free said on YouTube, the GLO is listening this evening. Mary Gunn told me to strike a pose, I don't know what that means. Catherine Foley said, are there any updates on business openings? I asked for, what are you speaking about, like?
COVID-19, I think she's.
I'm assuming that, so I told her if that was the case, we're following the governor's guidance on that. She did not get back to me on clarification. And Mary Gunn said, thank you for the mosquito spraying the last several days. Please don't give up, they are still hungry.
Thank you, Eric. One day I'll get that word right.
I'm gonna make a thing that says, it's Quint.
So can I just say the first part of the sub, and y'all finish it?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna go to section, we're gonna go into executive session, section 551.071 of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with the attorney.
the agenda. We'll bring it back to you at a later date.
The Dagger Island?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I've reviewed something that I've caught, that has caught my attention, and we need to get that resolved.